Call a meeting to order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's board meeting for the Wyndham Board of Education. We have two members, Joel Bortwick and Dustin Stevens, who are not present tonight. And we have, those two are at the concert. Otherwise, we have everybody present except for Mr. Joyce, I guess, will be at the concert also. So, start with the approval of the agenda then. Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
I just have two items that I'll do in my board report. One being on the new, the new number on the state reserve and also COVID update on students and staff as of today.
Okay.
I'll move this forward.
So move, so move.
Or seconded.
Motion by Barb Jones, seconded by Joel Lacan to approve the agenda as presented, with the two corrections or additions for Mr. Wormstead's report. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carries. Acceptance of donations. We have a fairly long list. I'll read those off, so the public can hear those. Excuse me. We have thirteen hundred ninety-one dollar donation from Wyndham Area Foundation for non-verbal and developmental cognitive disabilities curriculum for Mrs. Schmidt's elementary classroom students. We have two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Ag Builders for robotics programs. Two hundred dollar donation from Cozy for robotics program. Seven hundred and fifty-two dollar donation from C and B Operations for robotics program. Five hundred dollar donation from DC Utilities for robotics program. A hundred dollar donation from Staples Oil for the robotics program. Three hundred dollar donation from Ryan Homoski and Kevin Heggeseth for cross-country coach bus cost to Madison, Minnesota. Motion by Barb Jones, seconded by Joel Lacan to approve the agenda as presented, with the two corrections or additions for Mr. Wormstead's report. Any questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion carries. Acceptance of donations. We have a fairly long list. I'll read those off, so the public can hear those. We have thirteen hundred ninety-one dollar donation from Wyndham Area Foundation for non-verbal and developmental cognitive disabilities curriculum for Mrs. Schmidt's elementary classroom students. We have two hundred and fifty dollar donation from Ag Builders for robotics programs. Two hundred dollar donation from Cozy for robotics program. Seven hundred and fifty-two dollar donation from C and B Operations for robotics program. Five hundred dollar donation from DC Utilities for robotics program. A hundred dollar donation from Staples Oil for the robotics program. Three hundred dollar donation from Ryan Homoski and Kevin Heggeseth for cross-country coach bus cost to Madison, Minnesota. Fifty-five dollar donation from Bethany Lucern for backpack program. Five hundred dollar donation from Auto Club Group AAA for Officer Wallace and the Safety Patrol. Two thousand eight hundred dollar donation from Wyndham Area Foundation for ICEV comprehensive curriculum subscription for numerous high school CTE classes. And two thousand six hundred and ninety dollar donation from the Wyndham Area Foundation for fifth grade reading, novel study books, and unit study curriculum. Total donations nine thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Motion to move this resolution.
Move approval? Seconded?
Motion by Angie Clausen, seconded by Barb Jones, to move approval of the donations. Any questions on any of those? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion passes.
Just would like to say thanks to all those that donated. It is definitely appreciated.
Very much so. Open forum, have nobody. Approval of the consent agenda. Any questions on those?
I move approval. Seconded.
Motion by Bruce Muse, seconded by Joel Lacan, to move approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or comments? Proceed to vote on that motion. If all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose the same, motion passes. Item number seven, administrative reports, beginning with grade pre-K through five, Mrs. Frank.
Good evening, board members. Family engagement night was hosted at Wyndham Elementary on December seventh, which was just last week. Families learned about how playing card games and board games can help students develop thinking, reasoning, problem-solving, and reading and math skills. Families picked a game and played together. Some of the most popular games were Sorry, Racco, Battleship, and Skip Bow. We had a hundred and thirty-five people in attendance, which is the largest number that we've ever had, so that was really fun. Each family was able to take a free game home at the end of the evening and play it there as well. From an instructional standpoint, the elementary is experiencing a great deal of success with consistent core instruction as well as press interventions. Our teams have moved forty-one students out of tier three, which is the students in need of the most urgent interventions, up to a tier two, just within the last month. So what we've learned is that consistent, effective, research-based strategies are in full swing at the elementary and working really well. The elementary concert is tomorrow night. Kindergarten and first graders will perform at six o'clock, and second and third graders will perform at seven. Last week, our staff participated in a short top twenty review by Paul Bernaby. He reviewed the frame, which is seeing things from other people's perspectives, and the four pillars. The four pillars are, our job, our number one job is to help others succeed, see the problem, own the problem, communicate your matter, and honor the absence. And so Paul will be back again this Wednesday. He's going to be working with the sixth through twelfth graders again, which I'm sure is probably in Brian's report. But he worked with them last week, and then he'll work with them again on Wednesday. So it's a great opportunity, and it's, it went really well, so.
Questions for Mrs. Frank?
Jamie, where'd you get the games to give them?
Peggy Gale wrote a grant a couple of years ago, and we just have leftover games.
Must have had a lot of them for a hundred and thirty-five people.
We did. Each family got one, so, yeah.
I have Mr. Joyce's report here. He's at the concert right now. Just reemphasize the top twenty. We had our high school students on December eighth do training. On December fifteenth, we'll be working with our middle school on top twenty training, and then we do our staff review training at two forty-five to three forty-five. Also, we have top twenty training set up for our fall in service, or next in-service, correct? Next twin services? Next twin services for our staff for that. The principal's taking the lead on that. Other information's pretty generic in here that you can read. One thing I want to bring to your attention, we talked about earlier about National Honor Society approval, so in here is a draft. We'll talk about it more at our January work session for that. But he wanted to get this in front of you also. He'll be reviewing at the January work session, I believe, will be the dress code for graduation, just so that's consistent, the board approves that moving forward, so you have that information also. But that one, we'll probably have both these approved by the March regular meeting, if not sooner. So you're aware of that, so you can look at the components to be able to have a Honor Society and then be recognized with a court at graduation. So that's all enclosed in his information for you guys to read. I won't go into great detail of that, since it'll be reviewed later again. I know you saw this ahead of time. Any questions on his report that need clarifying?
Wayne?
Yes.
Is the, is that going to be read so that the public can hear it too?
When we do that?
Yeah.
We'll have it out in the board packet that, and I'm sure we'll have a discussion on it. I don't know how much, how in-depth it's going to be read, because we don't read all of our policy statements a hundred percent at board meetings.
Kind of give them a general ideas, maybe, to the public?
We can do that, yeah.
Yeah, because they'll, they'll be asking questions, you have to hear it, you know? And after all, it is televised, so it's kind of our responsibility to.
So again, with that, that's all information there. Policy, it's in the board packet. It gets emailed out to about three hundred people, so, and the newspaper gets it also. I'll bring that up to him. All right, my, my report? All right, COVID update as of last Thursday. We had six active cases. Five were come out of quarantine for students, and we had one active case. As of today, though, with those cases coming out, we currently have four student active cases and two staff active cases. That brings our total this year to a total of sixty-three cases for students. Okay, and that brings our total to eleven, I'm sorry, ten cases for staff so far this year. Now with that, though, we've had seventeen students, not sixteen, that were positive, that never walked in our building. They're getting out for family quarantine, Thanksgiving, or came back before, from a vacation, and they were positive before they even entered the school, so they never came to school. So we have those that we're tracking, that we have to track with the state. We've had seventeen students positive that never come into our, have not come into our school while they're in the contagious period, so. MDH Clinic was actually canceled, not postponed, it was canceled on Saturday. They're reaching out to the families that received the first dose for the five to eleven-year-olds, and so they can be able to get their vaccinations from either local providers, or DVHHS, or go to, I think it's St. James', St. Peter, New Ulm, Marshall, and another school will have that, and they sent that information, though, so they can get their second dose for that, for the vaccination.
Why was it canceled, Wayne?
Weather.
Oh.
Saturday.
That was probably a good thing, yeah.
Upcoming dates that I'm at the office for the next board meeting, I'm at the Dally Conference, the District Administration Leadership Institute, December fifteenth through the seventeenth. I'm on vacation, January fifth through the seventh. I'll be here over the holidays, working. Just so you know, building closures are set for the holiday per contract, December twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, and then January thirty-first. December twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh? Oh, I said, yeah, December thirty-first, yeah. New Year's is actually in December Eve, yeah, the day before, January first. Good catch, okay? I know I did that. I put in January first and realized it was Saturday. Well, I put in January first, I knew it was a holiday, so I just changed the thirty-first and didn't change the December, so. You didn't catch it either? Apparently I didn't. For that, other items that come up recently, you probably saw on the news, the state is showing a budget reserve for this biennium, that's two years, of seven point seven billion dollars. So you hear two things coming through the legislature. The Republicans will say, give that back on tax breaks. The Democrats will say, let's fund certain programs or more programming. I think there's probably a balance somewhere in there that's going to take place. Areas that if we were able to advocate for, could be consistent funding within the formula, but something that'll level the playing field, Minnesota has different items that are underfunded, which would be special education, EL learners, both affect us. Another one that'd be very important, and I know masses, we're pushing a little bit, Minnesota's socialization, school administrators, those two items, plus also we're going to be pushing preschool. There's a block of schools, because the grant dollars ran out, get fully funded preschool. Then there's the rest of us, who fight through grants and cross-fund, just like we do EL and special education. So trying to get that general ed formula, so K-12 is in it, so everybody has the same footing, at least, on their general ed students, and then work towards the rest of that. So we'll see how that takes place. It's going to be a very interesting, short session, because they don't come into session until, I think, the end of January or first part of February. Might be first part of February for that, so it'll be a lot of information coming at you very fast, could be a short timeline with that. We do have a resolution that just came from MSBA, it's probably in your email. We'll be preparing for you to look at. It's at the federal and state level resolution supporting fully funding special education. They feel this is one of those times that they actually have an opportunity to get that done and get that permanently funded. So you know, special education was supposed to be funded at forty percent from the federal level. It's about fluctuation between twelve and eighteen percent. And all that makeup is done by the local district on cross subsidy, at our general fund. So just something that's coming down the pipe, if you want to read your MSBA article about that resolution, so you're fully informed what we'll be talking about in January for that. That's everything I have there. Questions?
Any questions for Mr. Wormstead? Okay, we'll move on to the Board of Education reports. We had a meeting with Ed Minnesota Wyndham, Meet and Confer, last week, and Angie, myself, and Dustin were at that with the teacher reps. Do you want to give a summary on that, Angie? You had this in your packet also, about two pages, right?
Yes, we met with them last Monday. There was Chrissy Miracle and Laura Alstodt from Ed Minnesota, and there was about twenty-seven teachers in the room as well. So a lot of the discussion was mental health, there, for them, not only them, but for the kids. So I know the district is offering some group sessions for the teachers and things after school, and then there was this discussion about how we could, how they can access those mental health services through the insurance, and we encourage them to, you know, not only them, but the teachers, to just remember, it's not a stigma thing. Just if you need the help, you should actually go out and get it. We also talked about paras, there's a shortage of paras. So then we discussed the retention policy we were proposing for longevity, if they substitute for so many days throughout the quarter, so that was discussed. And then it was a shortage of time at the end of the quarter. They were looking for, like, a secretary out at the Highland School. Everything else is in the, is in the packet, and, but overall, I think it was a good, good discussion. They brought up a lot of valid concerns, a lot of, no promises were made, but we did do a lot of listening, and hopefully we can solve some of their concerns.
Something that was brought up was changing our current half-days at the end of semester and the next quarter, two full days, which would fall within the parameters of what we could do pretty easily. That, I did mention that I'm not recommending any extended holiday breaks, as that's, I explained that that brings a big burden on to our parents and our business employers for that, when everything else there, but something that when we look at the end of the quarter and semester, changing those from half-days to full-days would be a doable solution. If the board would be amenable to change in the calendar, I'd put that out, so parents would have, you know, a month's notice for the end of the semester for that. But that's up to the, I mean, I can do it, but I, you know, calendar changes, you actually have to approve, so. If it's not weather-related. It's not an action item, but if I knew I could, I could make that calendar change, you guys could prove it later. If you need some discussion on that, that's the one thing that's on that, that'd be doable early.
What would be the first date for that? When's the end of the second quarter, or third quarter?
January twenty-third, twenty-first. It's the Friday after Martin Luther King Day. I do know that.
And that'll be a full-time day?
Well, it's currently scheduled as a half-day student, half-day work day. Where they're asking at the end of the semester, change of high school courses and everything else at the semester and quarters, that those would be changed into full-days for that prep. January twenty-first.
Is there, I mean, like, so they can get things ready to?
To finish the semester transition over and get things ready, yep, correct.
And to get their grades ready and all that, and like, for those that have to teach a different class, like at semester change, they have time to prep for their classes, for the?
So this is just for the teachers, right?
Yep, so what would, what would be affected by this would be that the food service would not run that day, so they would not have a day of work, so they'd be lost hours there. The morning for the paras, I know we do have some training that we could definitely do with the morning, so they wouldn't lose any hours in schedule there. Busing-wise, that would be a non-calender day, which we've already committed to, so if we didn't have a makeup day, we'd have to talk to see if they'd forgive that. We pay for half the route that day. On those two days. So that's the cost of doing that.
Any concerns on that? Maybe put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Well, if we put on the agenda for that, I'm just telling you this, because this happened late. Goes on the agenda for next meeting, what takes place is, that's like, what's our meeting date, the tenth? The tenth, that's eleven-day notice to our parents, which is not always the most conducive for them to react to that.
I guess I have no problem with putting it on there for them, if the rest of the boards agree.
I think it's a good idea to let them know ahead of time, because it is a change as far as getting babysitting and things like that.
This is the one thing we could do for the teachers, I mean, because there's a lot of it, you know, it's going to take a lot more time to, to solve their concerns, and this is a short-term thing that we can, that we can give them right away.
And not all, just be sure not all items are solvable.
Well, Angie, I do have a question. Did you talk about mental health with school board members at all?
Check your insurance policy, Joe, and see if they cover it.
Joe, do you really want to engage in that conversation?
I think we have to have the lighter side of things sometimes.
I guess I don't see a problem with going forward with it.
Put a notice out to our parents and make an amendment to the calendar.
Other questions on that? Okay.
No, you'd have to, we're okay, because calendars can be retro-changed by the board motion, because what we do is, we approve and change our calendar at the end of the year to show the changes due to all the weather. This would be a calendar modification at that time, too.
Okay, solar update. Bruce, I know you were on that committee, anything new for that yet, or Mr. Wormstead?
One second. All right, very simply, solar update. I believe, Angie, you listened to the call. Did, did you get a chance to listen to that conference call? So I did, I just called them up and talked to them a little bit. They asked for some feedback from school districts about how to select. So this is not going, this is going to be a competitive grant, of course, but also it may only be partially funded, we're not sure yet. Based on one of the criteria they want to use is the free reduced student count. I asked them to go back to the two thousand nineteen school year, when people had more accurate counts, because there's a lot of fluctuation for a lack of applications put in with this. And then we will really will not know what the grant entirely looks like till December thirty-first, and we have about six weeks to do that, and at that time, we have to decide if we want to apply. And if we were to receive the grant, then we'd probably go up for an RFP to look at contract vendors for the solar, if it came in with enough funding to actually pay for it. So if we found out that we couldn't move forward with it, we'd just reject the grant at a later date. So I'm still looking forward to applying unless it looks prohibitive after December thirty-first, and we'll have it on the January tenth meeting to discuss and talk about what's moving forward at that time. So they, they came back and asked for more questions, is what they did, to schools about the grant process for basically outstate. I think it's going to be very competitive, and they're looking at trying to give money to a lot of schools, so it might be eighty percent funded, ninety, seventy, we're not sure yet.
Wayne, is it only funded for one year, though?
No, there's two cycles. So if all the money's not, if they come back and say they want to do sixty percent funding, or a hundred percent funding, doesn't matter. There is, the first round is in January, application to move forward, then there's another application in August. And then if there's still funding left over, they look at another application. They just don't know yet, especially on the, outside the Xcel Energy area, what's going to take place with that.
But doesn't, isn't there some kind of upkeep with that, as far as every year? And the district has to pay for it, isn't it, with, with that? I know if you buy, if you have one for your house, you have to, you have, you have to be responsible every year for upkeep, as far as changing, or, or whatever it may take, but I know, I know that for sure.
Bruce, did you want to talk about that from what, you talked to those vendors?
When, at the MREA conference, I was talking to one of the vendors, and it's a twenty-five-year warranty with the project. If we put one on the roof, they will come and move them so we can do a roof project, put them back. There is basically one part of it that needs upkeep, and that's got a twelve-year life. And that's part of the warranty, they will come, it's part of the purchase, so.
How about storms, as far as destroying or wrecking the, you know, hail and wind? Is that, is that that part of the insurance?
That sounds like insurance to me, with that.
Yeah, we, we go through that. So one of the companies we, we just talked to briefly, that's been pushing in some of these things, Ideal Energies, is that they will actually maintain for the first ten to fifteen years, every year, as part of their contract agreement for installing, so it's no cost going in, and they take care of that. And then once that's done, and they recoup their profit margin on the course, what takes place is then we own it the rest of the time, and that component's already been replaced. And then it's no different than any other thing, from a bus to our condensers or anything else on the roof. If we have a hailstorm, we're going to have to have insurance on that.
And the district has to pay for it, isn't it, with, with that? I know if you buy, if you have one for your house, you have to, you ha- you have to be responsible every year for upkeep as far as changing or, or whatever it may take, but anyway, I know that for sure.
Bruce, you, did you want to talk about that from what I, you talked to those vendor?
Uh, when I, at the MREA conference, I was talking to one of the vendors and it's a twenty-five-year warranty with the project. Um, if we put one on the roof, they will come and move them so we can do a roof project, put them back. There is basically one part of it that needs upkeep and that's got a twelve-year life. And that's part of the warranty. They will come. It's part of the purchase then, so.
How about storms as far as destroying or wrecking the, uh, you know, hail and wind? Is that, is that that part of the, uh, insurance?
That sounds like insurance to me with that.
Yeah, we did, we go through that. So, um, one of the companies we, we just talked to briefly that's been pushing in some of these things, Ideal Energies, is that they will actually maintain for the first ten or to fifteen years every year as part of their contract agreement for installing. So it's no cost going in. And they take care of that. And then once that's done and they recoup their profit margin on the course, what takes place is then we own it the rest of the time and that components are already been replaced. Um, and then it's no different than any other thing from a bus to, uh, our condensers or anything else on the roof. If we have a hailstorm, we're going to have to have insurance on that. It'd be a common insurable item on our policy. We're still at the early stages. I thought this was going to move, uh, faster, but, um, from the last meeting and then calling, uh, the State Commerce Energy Commission, um, it's going, we're just not going to know until December thirty first and on the final application, you know, what's going to take, take place next.
Anything else? That'll be an ongoing project for a while then, so we'll just have to keep updated. Okay, then we had, uh, MREA is finished. Bruce was at that. Uh, January thirteen, fourteen is MSBA up in Minneapolis. And if Dustin is still going to that, he's planning to, okay. And then April second, third and fourth is the NSBA convention. That Angie, Joel Boarderway and Dustin Stevens are planning to go to that. And that is in San Diego, right?
Correct.
So those are upcoming events for board members. We'll go on to item number eight. Approval of the bills for the building project. This month, everything was, uh, on the elementary NCTE, nothing on the Highland building. Total amount for payment would be seven thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. A motion to approve that payment.
Move for approval?
Second it.
Okay, I've got Angie Klassen with motion and, uh, Joel McCann with a second. To pay the bill for the building project, seven thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents. Any questions on that? Proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Poll is the same. Motion passes. Item number nine, approve the world's best workforce report and the AI report. And I believe that'll be Mrs. Frank's project.
Yes, thank you. So remember, world's best workforce report is actually reporting on last school year, so the twenty twenty-one school year. So just keep that in mind as we go through here. Um, the statute in regards to world's best workforce, um, says that school districts should be striving to have all students meet school readiness goals. Have third graders achieve at grade level literacy, close the achievement gap between all groups, have all students graduate from high school and have all students attain career and college readiness. So that's what we're going to be talking about as we move through here. So this first slide just shows, um, who we are in regards to our demographics. So, um, twenty percent, um, of our students are Hispanic. Uh, we go to, um, two percent Asian, two percent black or African American, two and a half percent native Hawaiian or island Pacificer, and then, um, sixty-eight percent white students. When we take a look at specific learning needs, we have eleven percent of our students, um, in need of, um, an English language learner, um, teacher. We have, um, almost twenty percent of students that rely on an IEP and a special education case manager to do their learning. And then we have, um, about thirty-eight percent free and reduced price lunch meals. And has, and as Wayne had mentioned just a few minutes before, that's probably not accurate because we had this whole issue of people not filling out the free and reduced price lunch forms. So that number's probably not accurate. All right. So the first part of world's best workforce, um, is to describe how we provide equitable access to effective and diverse teachers for all of our students. And so, um, I just talked about how we always aim to hire the top talent using that early retirement incentive and recruiting early before everybody else is even posting. And that's worked really well for us, right? I also talked about the three-year mentoring program. I talked about how we use our teacher evaluations as coaching sessions, um, to develop our new teachers, um, and also our tenured teachers, right? Everybody has something to learn and grow. And so we use those evaluations to help with that. And then, um, I talked about how, um, we provide a lot of professional development for our teachers, everything from trauma-informed to avid to the new teacher boot camp to top twenty, all of those things. The next section, um, was all about increasing racial and ethnic diversity for our teachers. And so, um, I noted that we attend several job fairs around the region to recruit teachers. Um, I did note that the board just approved, um, to recruit from Puerto Rico, so I put that in there. And then, um, I just commented on how Wyndham just has a lot to offer. And so when we recruit teachers, we just tell the story that Wyndham is the district that puts student learning first and, you know, do our very best to recruit the best and most talented teachers. Okay, we're going to move into the goal section of the report. Um, just know that there was a space for me to put, um, COVID-related statements for each of these goals. And so they were, you know, MDE is just wondering, how do you think COVID affected the results of the goals? And so I put a statement in most areas here that just said that, um, although we remained in person for the majority of the year, the pandemic definitely affected our student learning because we had individuals and classes that were quarantining throughout the year. So without consistent instruction, it's difficult to solidify learning for students. All right. So here's the first goal. It's all about having students ready for school. It's a preschool goal. Um, it's all about letter and word knowledge. Um, so we were going to increase from eighty-nine percent proficiency in two thousand nineteen to ninety point six percent. And unfortunately, the results were eighty-one percent of the students showing proficiency. So that goal was not met. All right. The next one is all about screening, preschool screening or early childhood screening. So in the past, we've always had a hundred percent of our kindergarteners screened before they start kindergarten. So we have to, um, try to maintain that goal. So our preschool team, along with, um, Teresa Hagan, really watched that kindergarten registration list and they compare it to the screening list. And so if there are any students that are registered for kindergarten but have not been screened for early childhood, they directly reach out and we make sure that we have them attend screening in August. And so that's why our numbers are so high, um, because they just do a great job with that. Now, in, um, this past school year, we did not reach a hundred percent. We were at ninety-six percent. We just had a couple of students that didn't make it to screening before they started kindergarten. All right. Um, our next goal is all around, um, students being fully immunized before they start kindergarten. And that, this goal falls on our nurses. They, um, go ahead and again, look at that kindergarten registration list. And if students are not fully immunized, they reach out to parents to have that happen. And that goal was met at a hundred percent. All right. The next goal is around, um, third graders reaching grade level literacy. Um, we use the FastBridge CBM to measure this. We wanted to increase from forty-eight percent proficiency to fifty percent. Um, that goal was met. We were at fifty-four percent of the students in grades one through three showing proficiency on the FastBridge assessment. All right, closing the achievement gap. So this goal had been the same for several years. You'll notice that it started in two thousand sixteen. So this is all about, um, free and reduced price lunch students and non-free and reduced price lunch and comparing the MCA scores. And so the gap was, um, twen- whoops.
Was closing.
It was, yeah. It was closing, yeah. We wanted to, yeah, close it. And then COVID came along and now the gap is a little bit bigger than it was even in eighteen nineteen, whoops, as I noted there. Okay, all students' career and college ready by graduation is our next goal area. And for this, we wanted to, um, meet or exceed the state average composite score for the ACT. Um, this goal was not met as the state's average was twenty-two point six and Wyndham's average was nineteen, eighteen point nine. So we did not meet that goal. And the last goal is all about graduation. And so our goal here was to mirror the state's goal. And the state's goal was to reach ninety percent graduation rate with no student group below eighty-five percent. And we met that goal. We've always had really high graduation rates, which is great. Um, so our graduation rate was ninety-seven point two. And then Wayne is up for achievement and integration.
Achievement and integration, uh, goals are based on a three-year plan that's submitted to the state. Um, we are considered a, um, a, uh, not racially isolated. We're a partner district with Mountain Lake and Jackson. Um, those two districts show the greatest discrepancy of, uh, minority populations. And we're a partner district with them. So we write goals based on this. So our goal, looking at our EL population, Hispanic population, was to close that achievement gap. And we were actually starting to move towards that achievement gap reduction, uh, and reading going from twenty-five reduced to nineteen point five and continue that work. Well, during this, we did not stay on track. We actually saw our, um, gap actually increase past our original benchmark after we'd started to close that gap. Same thing happened in math where we saw that our gap was twenty-four point one going to eighteen point one. We'd actually shrunk that gap, but then it grew back to twenty-nine percent. So we're considered not on track. Then we also have what's called integration activities. We do the kindness retreat and then we do those summer camps, uh, STEM camps that were in Jackson and Mountain Lake. And we're going to, we were going to get to host a, a robotics camp here, um, last summer. Or I'm sorry, the summer before when, uh, COVID wiped that out. And so we were unable to even do any of those integration activities that take place with this, for that. What's taking place also, the state is changing and, uh, the achievement gap stuff where you're not able to focus on any one minority group. It's going to be all achievement gaps. And I think Q-COM is working on that goal to get that, uh, more tightly aligned. So this one here, my guess is spring I'll be getting a letter saying that we have to change our goal to align to our Q-COM goal. It's, yeah, we don't know that by it's going to come yet because this is, uh, redo in, I think, April for achievement integration, March or April for that. So the pandemic did have effect, um, on what we do for consistency. When you miss four weeks in the middle and then you have kids that we had kids that were distance learning. We had kids that were online, um, with the priors homeschooled. We had kids that were out for ten days, twenty-eight days because of family quarantine. Um, some, a second round of quarantine where they never COVID, they'd be out with the rules that the state gave us last year. So, um, our rule's a little bit better this year. It helps us have more kids in school more often and consistency, which is good. So that's a positive come out of this from the twenty twenty-one school year. Questions for Jamie or I?
Jamie, could you go back and, and tell us about, uh, how you select staff as far as quality? The, um, I'm getting at the idea that, um, this whole thing with Puerto Rico, I've heard some things about color is more important than quality. And I want to make sure that color is not number one, you know?
I'll answer this one here. We hold all of our teachers the highest standard in their interviews in order to have that. Um, what we are trying to do is also be more intentional recruiting highly qualified, competent teachers that are skilled, that are more diverse and look like our students that we currently teach. It has nothing to do about saying that that is the criteria for hire. It's no different than we've hired, um, teachers, pairs and other people of different diversity and ethnicity. It's about the skills they have in order to serve our students in all areas. So I would push back against that, that that is the criteria. And I think that's a very narrow view that the people are sharing. We should, as, uh, administration board members saying, no, we're still hiring highly qualified staff.
But Wayne, when you said that, um, they should look more like our students, sometimes that can be taken a couple of ways. And it was.
That wasn't my intent. That weren't my words, that that was a criteria for that. I was just looking to say that our school needs to reflect our community. And our community is thirty-five percent diverse.
But the rest is white, right?
Uh, yeah, thirty-five percent diverse and sixty-five percent that is Caucasian.
And, and that's, that was the problem as far as people, you know, they ran the idea that that was number one.
I guess, I guess one thing that I'd say is that if they ran with that idea, they ran the wrong way. And we're not looking at what we were doing and what we're attempting to do. I think that that's on them and not us because what we're trying to do here is to have qualified teachers, whether they come from Texas or Mountain Lake or wherever, they're going to be qualified teachers. So if anybody has the idea that we're just doing this to fill a quota or anything like that, I think that they're not paying attention to what we're saying about what the school is doing. And it, it's kind of an insult to do that to the people of Wyndham. And I guess I do feel insulted that anybody would think that.
They do.
They do feel that way.
That's their fault.
Well, I don't know about that. Uh, you know, I don't blame people for thinking unlike we do. Uh, because the public oftentimes knows exactly what's going on in school. And sometimes board members do not know what's going on in school as far as, uh, I've been asked many times about our curriculum. And, um, they really, there's a group out there that will come on open forum. And, uh, if we get sidetracked in any way, we're going to hear from them. So we have to be careful what we say because people could take things more than one way. And we have to be really careful because oftentimes education in general, public education in general in this country has gotten a bad rap. And it can't be all because of, uh, the, um, the public. So these are things I think we have to be really concerned about. Be careful, be careful what we say because it could be taken more than one way. And let's face it, the public does, they are critical about public education. Because we throw more money at it. But according to research, if you listen to the news, it's not supposed, it's not really helping educate kids. So that's my concern.
Bruce, I just want to say that was very well said. Um, I agree one hundred percent. And I guess as a board member, I have complete and utter confidence that we're going to hire the, the best teacher for the position, but not based on the color of their skin. Because at the end of the day, we're all here for the kids and we want to make sure that we have the best education that we can possibly have for those kids. And if the public has issues and they have these concerns, invite them to open forum and we can address it with them directly.
Well, do you get calls on it, Angie, at all? Yeah. Being that I've been here for quite a few years, I get, it's amazing what people say to me and, you know, but I guess it comes down to a lot of it has to do with trust.
And I feel we've always been open here. We've put this on TV. People can hear exactly what we're saying. And basically I feel my job here is to serve, make sure we are doing the best for our students and staff.
And I agree. But the thing is, we have to also look at the other side as far as, you know, we're not, you know, we try to be perfect, but we're not in some ways perfect because, uh, for instance, uh, and I've, I've said this before, we, our curriculum has changed. Like for instance, we've dropped cursive, uh, letter, uh, writing. And, uh, to me, that's, that's a skill. We had it before for many years, but we dropped that. So thing is, are we giving grounded, you know, education?
Joe, we have not dropped cursive writing.
The teachers about it. They do not teach that anymore. No. Who are you, who are you talking to?
Mrs. Frank is right here.
It was not the Wyndham schools that so-called dropped cursive writing. Cursive writing is not in the standards, Joe. The ELA standards that were published in two thousand ten, which is the latest update, cursive writing is not included in that.
But, but Jamie, it's been mentioned here at board members, the board meetings, that we can also include things in our standard. We can put things in our standard too.
Yeah, board does, board does have the authority to, um, work within those standards and add.
Board does have the authority to, um, work within those standards and add things to the curriculum. Um, but Joe, you, you sort of gone on a bird walk here from our teacher recruiting that you asked on this slide right here about that. And I, I do thank the board member support that realizing that, um, we will recruit all teachers regardless of race, religion. We will not discriminate. And, and Joe, I don't know, I want you to hear this. And I'm gonna push back because it's also your job to realize what we're doing here? To push back and tell us people that that's wrong? Okay? We don't hire based on one set standard. And to assume that is pretty offensive to the teachers that sit in that room in the interviews, cuz we have teachers in interviews. I have principals interviews, I've had administration, other administration in interviews. Um, we do a darn good job of vetting the teachers that we do get. Our problem is, is that when you mention the news or whatever else is bashing public education, that's why we can't find quality people. We're pushing people out of the education field. We have early retirees, we have people leaving education. Part of it is because of the public pressure and listening to nonsense. It's absolute nonsense. And I'd love to have the conversation with any of the people that call you to talk to them about it. I've always said that, just refer them to me. I'll have a lovely have a conversation and they can come here and tell us about that also. But that's not accurate.
Well, Wayne, that's your, that's your concept. The thing is, I understand that and I, I agree with it. But the thing is, sometimes
You don't support it, you don't support it in the public. You aren't. Are you, you're pushing back, you bring it back like it's fact, like we're not a very good school or something.
No, no, I'm talking about generally speaking as far as public education, Wayne.
Then, okay, let's talk about Wyndham School. Wyndham School, not general somewhere else, Wyndham. Do you believe what we're doing here is good for kids?
I understand that.
Do you think we're putting our best effort forward?
I understand that, but the public also has their concept.
Do you support it?
Well, certainly I support it. You've heard me say many times, let's do what's best for kids. It's the public and what's said at board meetings a lot of times, and what's in the paper, and how people interpret it.
How people interpret stuff's not my responsibility on that. We've been very clear and transparent on this, very clear and very transparent.
Are there any further questions about world's best workforce report? I would like to get to the concert. I have two girls that are singing tonight, so.
Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jamie. We need a motion to approve this report that was presented.
I will move forward to the report that was presented this evening.
I'll second it.
Motion by Barb Jones, second by Bruce Muse to approve the world's best workforce report as presented by Mrs. Frank and Mr. Wormstead. Any other questions? If not, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Item ten is to approve the candidates for the MREA twenty-twenty-two Board of Directors, and that was enclosed, it's up on the board.
Their bios are inside the packet for you to read on this. Um, we have an at-large representative and teacher rep that we can, um, nominate. Uh, Jennifer Ram is actually part of Palmer Bussing, uh, a past teacher, um, very active in that. Um, all candidates are good. Um, board needs to make a decision. There is a connection, um, for us from Jennifer Ram.
We can nominate or vote on two of the candidates for the first position and one for the teacher rep. So, somebody here to nominate.
Westerberg from Lake Crystals from our area also. If you're looking regional.
I would say let's go regional and vote for Jenna and for Mark second.
Motion is for Jennifer and for Mark Westerberg.
Would you make a friendly? Yep.
And for Craig.
Okay. And for Craig for the teacher rep. Any questions on any of those? If not, we proceed to vote. All in favor of electing those three people as presented, say aye.
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 Post same. We will submit those names in. Item eleven is to approve increased substitute rates effective January first, twenty-twenty-two, and that was also enclosed in your packet. And has been discussed in other meetings. Any questions on those?
So basically, our hourly employees, we set some criteria. So those who sub more often becomes more of an incentive. So after thirty hours and, um, let me zoom in so I don't say the wrong group there, I apologize. After thirty hours, seventy-five cents per hour we added, um, for our staff. And then a dollar fifty over sixty. And then our full-time, uh, employees be forty and eighty hours per month. And then our food service would be seventy-five to a dollar fifty. And then down below, um, Fairmont did something very similar this recently also. Um, increasing our substitute pay, one to five days is one, still a hundred and fifty dollars per day in a month. If you sub six to ten days in a month, it's a hundred and seventy-five. And if you're over eleven plus days, eleven plus days is two hundred dollars a day. Um, try to incentivize that. So we have, uh, substitute teachers here more frequently for that, um, long-term. So this is one of those things also that we had in the works beforehand when we, um, I asked, uh, the teachers at Minnesota about a couple of concerns they had. One was the mental piece, and we said we'd be looking at Southwest Service Club contract to provide some groups. And another thing is looking about how we can incentivize substitutes cuz not having subs puts additional burden on our, our teachers. And when there's not para subs also, and food service puts a lot of additional pressure on the rest of our staff. So that's why we, um, looked at how can we, um, incentivize more subbing from our subs.
Questions, comments, or a motion?
This would be only through this year, rest of the year, January on, and then we reevaluate it like we always do for, in the summer.
I will move this forward as presented.
Second.
Motion by Barb Jones and second by Angie Claussen to approve the increased substitute rates beginning January first. Any more questions on those? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion carries. Approve the updated twenty-twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two activities assignment, which was enclosed in your packet. And maybe one change that shows up there is for girls' basketball C squad, the addition of Lance Jackson and Dane Nielsen as volunteer coaches. Motion to approve that.
I so move.
Second.
Motion by Bruce Muse, second by Angie Claussen to approve the activity assignments as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same. Motion passes. Review of the retention policy number four twenty-eight, which is enclosed.
Okay, I put this forward earlier about looking how, um, retention of employees long-term. And there's some districts that did some retention stipends this year through S R funds at one time, but that didn't look like a sustainable model. And so, um, after talking, uh, seeing some stuff online and doing some digging, I talked to the Huron School District in South Dakota. They actually have a policy for this, just for teachers. Peggy and I discussed this at depth, we wanna do this for all staff if we do this. Um, because we're looking at retaining all of our staff across all, um, areas with this. So basically, what takes place is years of service to the Wyndham district would be rewarded after five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, thirty-five, forty, um, one-time stipend payments, um, for those years of service. So this is a draft, I mean, this is gonna take us a while to discuss this, but I wanna get this draft in front of you to take a look at and to see if there's any questions about what we're doing. So the guidelines for earning retention stipend, board of education may enter changes policy and items and is not negotiable. In return, there will be no costing of this program to any contractor in negotiations. So this is something that board is doing, um, but it's not a negotiable item because we're doing across all things. We're not entering a negotiation with every group with this. Uh, must be employee of the Wyndham School District. All permanent employees are eligible regardless position within the district. Permanent employees identified by starting work on first day of student contact and remains working through the last day of student contact. We put this in there, this language because of paraprofessional food service and those items. So, um, we knew how we define a full years of service for that. And then they're returning for the next year full day of service. So consecutive years of employment is needed to reach each stipend level, except will be board-approved leave of absences. So if a board approves a leave of absence for somebody to take childcare leave for a year or sabbatical or a medical leave for a year, um, that would not count as discontinued service from the district. Of course, for that cuz it's board-approved leave. Uh, for that. So I showed the example in two C for the permanent for that. Employee must return the following year to receive retention stipend. Example, custodian completes fifteen years of service for a thousand dollar stipend. Custodian must return to work the next fall to receive stipend. So if they were to leave August first or August thirty-first, and kids were gonna be there September third, remember we said first day of student contact? Last day of student contact. So we have a, a, a border so we can treat everybody the same, that it's about the students and a retention of employees. Uh, payment system. Uh, first-year program, employees will receive a, uh, retention stipend for their current years of service. No back payments for previous milestone will be paid. So if I'm a twenty-five-year veteran, I'm gonna get the twenty-five-year payment of fifteen hundred dollars. But because where we're experiencing this, it'd be unaffordable to then go back, pay, issue a twenty, fifteen, ten, and five. We couldn't, this would be unattainable to do that. Um, but that means some people may be at year nineteen and would receive the thousand dollar fifteen-year stipend. And then the next year receive the thousand twenty-year stipend. That's about the fairest way you can do this, I'll try to work through this. So, um, with that, so consecutive years of service and retention stipend amounts would be this. Um, costing for this, and explain how we'd pay for this, um, was in my notes, here it is. So I broke down and went through all the years of service of employees and I did a three-year span. The first year, of course, is the most expensive cuz you have the most people available. How we do this, we already put in our S R application, a type of, our money set aside in our S R application for ninety thousand dollars for retention of employees. So we'd front-load the first year using those federal one-time funds, cuz it's a one-time payment to do that, of ninety thousand dollars. So our cost of district first year approximately a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars if everybody returns who was on our list. Then I did twenty-three and I did twenty-four. Cost range for this is gonna be thirty thousand at the top end and probably about twelve to fourteen when I looked at years. Some, uh, thinner years for years of service based on hiring that's taking place in the past. Um, how would we pay for that long-term? We had the ability to use, um, to free up some general fund dollars through staff development to free up for this. It's pretty simple for us to do. Um, but the amount of money that's entailed here to retain employees and give milestone thank yous for this, my vision for this would be the board members would actually give, uh, the note or recognize the employees at the, um, fall in-service with their checks coming in September twentieth payroll. That's the fast version of everything there. And I, I made the policy as short and as simple and as clear as I could. Um, I'm sure it needs some tweaking when you read it and make sure some questions that come up, H R wise and, and items, um, that we still need to work on. This would not need to be in place and approved till about April, uh, even May. But I wanna get it in front of you now so you have time to look at it, read it. Some of those examples would come out and become subtext somewhere else instead of inside the policy as examples, maybe. General thoughts of the idea and plan and policy, I should say, policy.
I like it. Um, question, does this pertain to full-time and part-time?
Uh, that is our discussion that Peggy and I had about this, is that it would pertain to all employees.
Sounds good.
Because we'd have employees that would fluctuate sometimes in the para, food service and other areas. Um, it is just as difficult for us to find that three-hour shift worker for food service as is to find the full-time custodian.
I was hoping you were including part-time as well.
And that's figure, the part-time is also figured into the estimate.
I took the entire seniority list and new employee hires and laid them all out.
Just so I understand, would that be, is that prorated for the part-time employees or they all get the same amount?
It is not prorated according to this proposal.
Perfect. I mean, I'm fine with that, I just
The board would choose to prorate it, that's fine. I'm, I just put this in as if it, the most costly way we'd do this. And how you jumpstart that most cost, costly year, year one.
An employee to the district is an employee.
And a board member is also an employee, right?
Wow, Don, you're up there on this one. Well, I tell you what, according to OSHA, you are. I don't wanna go down that bridge a little bit, across that bridge right now, but
I'd be really for that.
Just a question.
Well, actually, we'll get a clarification on that, that coming forward, but that's possible, yeah?
Other questions? I wasn't expecting it.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, we'll move on to, uh, reviewing board and committee assignments. This was on there so you can see which your assignments are this year. And, uh, you're asked to send your request to Barb Jones as a clerk for your request for next year. And also your ideas or thoughts about different offices that you would like to attain or sit on. And then get those to her and then we can compile that or she can for, uh, the January meeting.
Actually, they were due to, for tonight's meeting. And I have compiled them as per what people requested. I don't know if we need, do we wanna, does it need to be? I'm just presenting it to you if there's anything else in the report. If there's anybody that wants changes. See something different.
Anything that's not mentioned in there that you'd be willing to do? Barb is strongly hinting that she'd step down from the clerk position?
Yes, and actually, that's the only one that's, um, uh, on this particular list, uh, Angie Claussen has, would graciously do the treasurer, but wants to stay on her other committees. Um, Don is okay with present committees, but does, um, does not need to have an office, but what, whatever works best for the board, he will do. Um, Joe, Joseph Lacan and Bruce Muse are fine with what they had last year. Joel Borderwick, um, would like to stay vice-chair and stay with the same committees. And Dustin Stevens has, would like to be chair and have the same committees, but is willing to rotate if needed. Um, I, I'm wanted to give the opportunity for other board members to grow. I'm grateful being in the clerk role. I'm willing to help in whatever other areas that are needed for the board. Um, as of right now, so the clerk position is still open. So if somebody does want, I mean, I will take the position if no one wants it. But if someone else is willing to take it, then that would be fine. And then we can vote on these at our January meeting to confirm. Did you need another one of these, Peggy, for the? Except I murdered Joel Borderwick's last name. When you have to do it in a hurry, you just, um, and you only have like the first name printed in your phone? That's what happens. Any questions?
The only comment I would make is that um some of these committees can't be filled until after the officer elections because of uh the committees that have our members have to be on there, so.
Per policy, they are required by the position held in whoever holds him, yes, correct.
Okay, thanks Barb for getting these together. Okay, review the Wyndham Area Health Contract for On-Site Athletic Services, Mr. Webster.
Um I've been talking to Wyndham Area Health, last time we had uh athletic trainer services is um from a orthopedic out of um Spirit Lake. That was shared with Jackson, they currently just have one at Jackson um there. I've talked to the hospital about this before, they do not have a need for an athletic trainer, it's pretty much on their staff. So Terry Elder has been very kind to work and look for opportunities for this in which they she can have her physical therapy department. Um actually work and serve and support our student athletes at games and also um with uh checkups, check-ins at our site with that. Uh one question that came back as a concern within the contract that Dustin Stevens brought up was uh sort of sole provider um of medical health and what happens is that was sort of an over-exagger. I talked to over overstated, talked to Terry Elder and says, no, it's about the athletic training thing that they'd be the sole advertising of of that service. Uh because my concern was, let's say if we do um in the future, we redo redo the track and we get a sponsor to redo the track to help cut down those costs or anything we do there. Or we have um more ad sponsors for the scoreboards, things like that that take place, like we have Toro out um on the scoreboard at the baseball, so uh baseball field. And we have those sponsors on the gym scoreboard, I did not want to narrow that down, we're a Vera Clinic. You know, Sanford Corporate as much as or things like that, or Vera Corporate couldn't come in and and make a twenty-five thousand or a five thousand, whatever donation would be towards that. Um so I'm getting that clarified on this, so the contract's a little clearer on that. Uh so there's in seven years, if this is going really, really well, we don't have something that pops up later that everybody goes, oh, that wasn't the intent. No, that's what the contract sort of reads and we end up in dispute over it. I don't want that to happen because I don't know what's gonna take place in seven to twelve years from now. Uh the other thing with this, that um at four thousand dollars per year, that that four thousand dollars pays for is the uh certification courses for her staff to be able to do events like this. There's an extra little certification they need to do, even though they're physical therapists. But to do this at event stuff, that's what they need to have, so that's what technically we're paying for all their time. They commit to this is being provided by Wyndham Area Hospital and their uh physical therapy department as a service to our athletes. And having this add a medical professional at all of our home games. Now that might mean we have three activities at night, a wrestling in the old gym, a basketball in the new gym and hockey. We'll probably still just have one person available between three sites, that so happens at other schools too, but just so you're aware of that.
This is for varsity activities?
Varsity home activities. If they wanted to travel with our team during playoffs, we'd probably let them travel with the team during playoffs. So. Review, any questions you saw within the contract?
Do we have medical people on at the games now? We do, don't we?
We only football games, we have uh ambulance services, E M Ts for home varsity football games.
Who handles any injuries, is it the, I mean, like if somebody gets hurt on the basketball court, what happens at this stage?
At this stage, we have um, there's minimal training um that is provided that you're required to take as a coach. Um and it's uh I call it ice compression, elevate, rest, icer. Um how to maybe tape ankles, wrists and a few things like that. But it it's really not a medical evaluation that is geared to that, to the benefit of the child as much as saying they probably shouldn't be in there. This would give us a a little more and and they're the final say, so if a kid comes out and would um have an injury in the in the um for some reason, the coach wanted back in, but the um physical, the medical provider there, physical trainer, uh physical therapist at the time said, no, they're they can't play on that leg. And then that would be the decision reached at that because of the medical professionals, we're not gonna be overruling a medical professional in that in that situation, the safety of a child. It's about the safety of kids is what it really is. And providing that uh medical expertise in a a fast-moving sports from softball to baseball to hockey to football to basketball, wrestling, all of them, gymnastics. I mean, you just list all those there, there's opportunities for injuries all across the board. Not gonna win, hopefully none. Uh many schools, not all schools have a similar service within our conference. Some pay, some do not. Our fee is basically paying for that training.
So this be a long-term contract or is it something that's renewable every year or?
It'd be for the rest of this, when when approved be for rest of this year plus the next year, if the training can be done in time. Um Ms. Elder uh said that she could not put them onsite until they had this training for that, so as soon as they had the training, then they'd start. Um so we gotta pay for the training, then there's some training in January um for this. I think then this would be starting in February, then the next January, so there'll be another year of training. So you're looking at about an eighteen-month commitment right now. Or January to January, or January to December commitments is what you're looking at for review.
And they feel they're gonna have enough staff to be able to supply for all these games? I mean, that's a that's a lot to ask, I know our at one point, our activities director, we paid an extra stipend to have them go to games or have someone represent at games, different.
Yeah, but when we sat down and and planned through this, I said my ideal situation would be all games, so she came back with a proposal for that. Um to meet that and and do a rotation through there and how she can uh work and and use her hours. So if something were to change, she'd talk to us. If something were to be different, I'm sure she'll communicate with the athletic director on this because this will fall under the athletic director's role in the future.
And this would be for high school sports?
Yep, high school, varsity, varsity level, not all high school.
So that would include hockey?
Home, yep.
Would need to approve this next month?
We, yeah, we'd prove it uh next month. Have you seen objections to this right now that other than making sure we clarify um who can be sponsors and official advertisers for this? So we narrow that scope down to them for all physical athletic training and physical therapy. Um that would be them and then we um, so we keep our doors open to other opportunities that would take place from other medical providers within our community for other sponsorships or the um scoreboards etcetera that we do. And we start as soon as we could at this. Every year, the, I mean, the exclusion clause here. Term renewal, initial term being one year, gain this, one year later and then one year later, so it'd be an annual review. You've noticed ninety days beforehand, so every fall we do a review on this. And the board could choose to pursue or not pursue at that time. So you're not locked into a a ten-year agreement.
Any other questions? Okay, item sixteen, the discussion on addition of a soccer program and the next steps in pursuing that program.
So we had a student came forward as part of their senior Eagle Achievement Project um about the interest of possibly doing soccer within our school, which led it to him creating a soccer survey um to boys and girls gauges, uh sixth grade through eleventh grade. We'd already been talked to by Saint James, um and Saint James been talking to Medelia um for that. And so I said, it'd be a good time to do this, let's find out what the interest level is to start that conversation because I don't want to start a conversation about another program unless we have students actually interested in it. So the questions formatted were, were you interested in soccer, would you be willing to participate in soccer? Um if it was co-op and transportation is provided, because all of our co-op activities, we provide transportation. So um we'd be consistent on that. And so we had forty-two yeses, nineteen female, twenty-three male, grades six through eleven this year, which would be next year, seventh through twelfth graders with this. Uh strikes me, there's enough interest at um to actually have conversations, not saying we'd end up finalizing, but to have conversations. Um Mount Lake Christian, I asked uh the superintendent from Saint James about this and have Mount Lake Christian, Mount Lake involved since there's uh Mount Lake Christians begging to soccer with this. And the advantage of Saint James is they actually have practice facilities. We do not have level practice facilities without putting um a whole new complex in right now. Until we decide, you know, A, replace the track and where it goes, we shouldn't do a lot of extra work around it that we'd have to undo with that. So um I thought if we're going to look at starting this, we need a partner. And we don't have enough for seven junior high and high school all the way through for soccer and they don't either from their numbers. But together, some schools working together for the short term could develop and yield uh larger soccer programs in the future. Questions?
It was Saint James that um Saint James approached us?
Saint James Superintendent called and asked me about this um prior to, but we hadn't done a survey. And then when the student came forward, I said, okay, it's time to do a survey, see if our students are interested in this.
And the breakdown as far as grades, how many in each grade, the student has that in his survey?
Yeah, it's in the survey at that and I can break that out more for you long-term. So um the key is, is do you have enough junior high kids and enough high school kids to run separate programs with that? And hopefully even a J V program within that. And their numbers are near the forties also, so you're looking at eighty between the bowls, so you're talking forty to fifty kids in each. Thirty to thirty-five to forty-five kids in each male and female programs, you're 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 enough to do that then. So but once we meet together and that'd be underneath our committees. So. Survey says, who needs to work on this, if the committee stay the same? That'd be Borderwick with Angie as the alternate. Um when we host or start having meetings about this and all the details of this. Big thing is looking for the board's approval just to at least start the conversation officially about the possibility of doing this for the fall of twenty-two. When soccer starts.
I think it's definitely something worth pursuing, I know there's a huge interest in Mountain Lake, they had in what, two to three hundred kids this past fall? Or, yeah, was it last fall?
Spring.
Last spring, whatever. Um and I know a lot of kids from Wyndham drove over there to attend this, um so I think if we can make it work, uh I think it'd be a good an opportunity for some of these kids.
I agree with that.
Fall sport or spring sport?
Soccer is fall and I believe spring or girls is also in the fall, I believe, or we have both in the fall. I just didn't remember seeing the Minnesota High School League, I just remember seeing the boys' state championship picture, I don't remember seeing the girls right now.
Numbers would be competing against volleyball and football, but some of those kids probably aren't interested.
And cross-country. And there's kids on the list that aren't in part of any activities, majority of them are.
Other questions on that?
I'm just looking for guidance that I can move forward with um a board member to schedule meetings so they can bring back information. It's informational right now, this is not a a thing we're moving forward with and for this, so.
Just scroll down to the outreach groups there, once.
It'd be D right here. Uh we'd use the letter D here, Minnesota High School League, extra credit, so Borderwick and Claussen's who we'd we'd use.
Okay, anything else? Okay, other items, I have uh no meeting work session in December twenty-seventh for the holidays. And then January tenth, twenty twenty-two is the next meeting, which will be the organizational meeting. Any other items anybody would have? If not, we're adjourned.